To order this regular meeting of the Planning Commission for January 20, 2009. And call the roll.
Yeah.
Chairperson John Trade Craft.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Jason Hinkle.
Present.
Commissioners Clint Folsom.
Here.
Phyllis Harden, James McGinnis, Bob McCool.
Here.
Craig Prestesator.
Here.
Michelle Ripmuster.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Present.
County Attorney Jeff Parker.
I'm here.
Okay, moving on to item three.
Like they can read them.
Public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. This is time for anyone here in the public to come forward and address the question on items that are part of the agenda or on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the October 21, 2009 minutes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the established consent agenda.
I second it.
Let's see, I have a motion and a second of Ripmuster and.
Ricker.
Ricker, thank you. Sorry, Tom.
It's all right.
It's been awhile.
(laughing).
Moving on, let's see, call or pay with the motion?
Fine.
Unanimous? Okay, item, moving on to item number five, new business. This is a public hearing for amendment to the final development plan for Discovery Office Park regarding entrance signs and vested rights. Let's see, is there proof of publication over here? There is. Okay. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes.
If you'll come forward and state your name and your address.
My name is Dan Hunter. My office address, I guess that's what you're after.
That's fine.
Is 1300 Yellow Pine Ave. in Boulder. I represent the Hunter Group. I'm the original architect for the Discovery Office Park and brought that through the system and designed the building that's up there right now. The building has, is predominantly a medical building, not entirely, but it's about 60 or 70 percent occupied by medical businesses. I believe there's four medical businesses up there. And the problem that they're having is a lot of these businesses serve public enterprise, workman's comp type claims and other issues like that, but not entirely. And without a sign out there, their patrons, their people looking for medical help are having a difficult time finding those businesses. They're driving around looking for that address. So what we proposed is a sign that relates to the existing building with an archtop, the same kind of stone pillars that the building, that we have on the building. This is a, let's see, I'll call it a green sign because it's a solar powered sign, the lights are solar powered. So across the top, there's a small photovoltaic array. There's an area in the lower right-hand corner of that one pillar for a battery that they would charge up and that would run the lights off a timer during the night so that they don't, they're not sitting there running all night long. There is a timing device that turns them off at a certain time. So what we're trying to do is get a sign so that people can find these medical businesses instead of driving up and down McAslin trying to figure out where they're supposed to go. So that's the whole reason for this application and the proposed amendment to the FDP.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions from the commission?
On one of the sheets, it mentions that there's a potential for other signs and I mean, there's three more buildings to be built there.
Yes.
Has there been thought put into whether this sign would include the other buildings or would additional monuments be considered later?
There would probably be a request at a later date and at this point in time, in the current economy, a much later date for other signage that might discuss. I mean, right now, we have a sign that addresses McAslin and says Discovery Office Park. It's that stone monument. So if people are directed to Discovery Office Park, then there's interior signs to the park also. They're smaller. So that was brought up by Jay and Fred, should we, you know, what should we do about that? Well, at this point in time, while there's sites for three more buildings, I don't believe that we are lucky enough to be imminently designing any additional buildings right now. As we all know, the market's kind of stale and the economy, it's not easy to fund anything in today's economy. In fact, as an architect, I've had several projects that were approved that lost their funding. And so it's a jury time right now. So is it possible that myself or someone else would be back up in front of you in two or three or four years? I think I would have to say yes, it's possible. But today, since we don't really have a plan for what is the next building up there, it's a little premature to figure out where we would put a sign. So that's the answer to that as far as I know.
Then in terms of the size, it's an awful big size and big compared to the monument that you've got on Discovery, which is, it just sits on a base and it's, it doesn't have sides to it.
But it is within your regulations, size-wise. It fits within the allowable size that is allowed on McAslin for the frontings that we have. So I mean, it is, it is within the regulations.
Was there consideration though to going with something that was, I guess, more similar to the one that you've got on Discovery?
Well, the whole idea is that people can actually, as they're traveling either direction on McAslin, have enough of a sign that they can actually read and identify, oh, I'm going there. The little signs inside the subdivision, they're fairly compact, small signs and the letters are fairly small on those signs. And to be going up McAslin at any reasonable speed, you're not going to realize, you're not going to be able to actually read the size of those letters. The whole idea is that somebody can see the medical facility thereafter and say, oh, got to turn here. So I mean, that's why it is the size it is, so that you can actually read the letters when you're driving on McAslin.
There's no address though? I mean, from what I see in the makeup of the sign, it doesn't have like a big, maybe this is family address, so if you see the address number as you're driving by and say, oh, okay, well, there's the address.
Well, I guess the thinking is they see Exempla Medical and boom, I'm going to Exempla Medical and so this is where I'm going.
Yeah, that wouldn't help. That's only going to help what ones are on the sign though. I was just thinking in the future in another building, they see an address number and they think, okay, my building must be in there if there's an address number that's, you know, the same address versus trying to put every single building on the sign in a recognized fashion.
I think that probably goes back to the first question. Is there any contemplation of a secondary sign down the road when other buildings show up on the site? And today, you know, there's no direction going that way. It won't surprise me, as I said, that myself or someone else is up here making the same argument in three or four, five years. But today with a single building, we're just trying to help the tenants in that building, the medical tenants in that building.
I mean, the building, the building's set back from the road quite a ways. Is this one sign going to be adequate to identify the building? I mean, it is, it's got one entrance, kind of in and out. Will it be a situation where you come back later and propose another alternative like loop entrance to try to get more visibility and more access to the building?
You mean a second entrance to the park? I don't think, I don't recognize anybody on the commission right now that was here when I was going through this. Okay, sorry about that. But to get the entrance we got, trust me, that was not easy. And as a ride-in, ride-out, I mean, there's not really a place to have a second entrance. And the idea is that that road eventually connects to a road that would feed down into the lower pasture as it is right now. And that would loop back around and give access through that future development to McAslin. But there's really just no way to have a secondary entrance into that development.
All right. Bob, any questions?
No.
Okay. Chase?
Nope.
Craig? Michelle?
Nope.
Tom? Just a couple of things. Is there, would there be an opportunity to eliminate the sign from, from the canopy down onto the sign as opposed to illuminating it up from the ground?
Well, we did look at that and the sign companies that we're using, that we're consulting with, their recommendation is that you're just simply not going to really see, because of the size of the canopy, there's not enough acute angle to actually illuminate the letters. It's like shining a flashlight, you know, at Halloween up this way. So you don't get the letters, you get kind of a crazy looking, you know, bunch of shadows. So it really, for an effective sign to have any lighting at all, it really needs to be broadcast up to the sign.
Or brought out further and then down, right?
Yeah. I mean, we're also fighting some cost considerations. I mean, the cost of the sign has grown, grown, grown and to take that archtop out five or six feet is going to be a little.
Well, or suspend the lights out where holes or something coming off.
Well, I'm not sure, I see where, if we have lights that are out on poles, that that necessarily isn't a better lighting solution.
It may not be. I'm just asking the question to avoid shining lights, continuing to shine lights out.
Yeah. Than ground lights. And basically, the ground lights are going to kind of disappear in the landscaping, whereas lights that would go out three or four feet and shine back and it would take two or three of those on each side, that might be more offensive than what we propose right now.
On your rendition, or your detail two, as opposed to your detail, really your elevation one, you're showing six sign bands and then on the detail, you're showing five sign bands?
Well, the intention is to have six sign bands, I believe, on the sign.
Minor, I just noticed it, so. Okay. Any other question?
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask this now, but you mentioned the lights on the timers and I don't know if we try to establish, you know, that the lighting would go off after general business hours or what so that there's not just lights shining on just for the sake of being on? I don't know if that's what we establish here.
You certainly can ask the question.
Yeah. Have you thought about what that timing cycle would be?
Well, it's almost self-regulating. I mean, we're working off the solar charged battery. So we haven't set a timing cycle, but to think that we would run these lights till midnight, the battery wouldn't possibly even do that. I mean, it recharges every day and it's probably good for a couple, two or three hours.
Okay, that's the kind of thing, so typically after a dark.
If it's appropriate, so we don't just run the battery just dead as a doorknob, we get some use out of it and the next day it recharges, trickle charges and then, you know, when it clicks on, it's on till maybe eight o'clock or seven or something like that.
Yeah.
There's no reason to run it late because the businesses aren't open that late.
Right. Well, I've seen many, many businesses in general that run lights long after they've closed their doors so that it's appreciated when the lights can come off.
Well, once again, as a solar device, it's kind of self-regulating.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Does staff have a presentation? Just a couple of items. Commissioner McGinnis, who wasn't able to attend tonight, did call and provide comments. He said in general he was okay with the sign, he just wanted to make sure, his concern was that the applicant would possibly in the future come back and request multiple signs on McAslin and he was not in favor of that. And we talked about the additional signs for additional buildings. In the PD, it does recognize that a tenant sign and a monument sign for each building would be considered as part of the final development plan as those buildings come forward. So that's something that the planning commission will give another look at as far as where the applicant's proposing to put those signs when that comes forward. So it's something to keep in mind that you'll have input on those new signs in the future. And then the third is for the resolution, there's a couple, one condition for sure we'd like the planning commission to add and that is staff review of any deadlines or minor technical revisions that there may be. And then the second one, if the planning commission feels like it would like to have something in the resolution as far as a time that the lights would need to be turned off by, we've done that for other projects as they come forward. So it's something that we could add as a condition of approval. Fred, anything to add?
(inaudible). No.
Okay.
Just need to open for the public, open a public hearing for the public afterwards.
Did I, oh, I did not technically open a public hearing?
You know, it's done differently by all clients, so this could be a time for the public.
Okay. All right, well, if I haven't officially opened a public hearing, so we can give the opportunity from anyone here in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission to please come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Young and I have been a homeowner, a renter, a business owner locally in Superior, Rock Creek. I have a lot of comments, I'm very against the signage. Being a business owner, there's a lot of legalized way to get out to know where we are and newspaper advertising without the glitz and glamour of signage. I've been successful and been found and moved in the Superior area. As a renter and a homeowner in another area, I remember my first remembering the area as I drove down McAslin from 128th and Indiana. It was peaceful, serenade, open space. I felt like I was just coming into heaven, it was just quiet, the rolling hills, the valleys, the mountains, the snow-capped view was a place that I decided to be a homeowner and a business owner of the area. And I think that we need to keep in mind that we have had area, towns and cities make the top 10 in the country most likable areas to live and I think it comes with keeping down the glitz and glamour and we do have open space. I also feel like we have a little bit of using the medical facility that there is one of as a rider to get all these other businesses out in the open. It's like a bill that's going to be passed and then everybody else follows pursuit. So if we truly have an emergency building here, I think it should be looked at as a Vista Hospital or something if it truly is an emergency building, to put the signage right on the building. And what good is lighting if you can't see it at night anyways if it truly is a emergency medical building? So if you have a signage on the side of the building that gets light up right up on McAslin, I think that would be sufficient. I think that any signs, we're just passing that, you're going to have multiple signage all over and I think that there, like I say, I think the laws are very applicable that are down, including from, you know, there shouldn't be the brochures and papers that are left on doorknobs that have been getting away with and the little TP signs on the side of the roads. I mean, just lately that it seems like they've all been there and I just think that needs to be done away with. There was no problems with businesses before and I don't think we should go and tell the side of the laws of that. Also, I think that because it is a hill on Discovery Park, I think all we need to do is tell people it's in Discovery Park and you have a hill going down McAslin. So if you have signage, now people are going to start slowing down, I think we're going to start slowing up traffic, let's stop and read the signage. And I think it's accident prone. I don't know if anybody's looked at that, but you are coming down that hill on that one side and when you're going up the other side, you know, it just takes, you don't want people looking over on the other side of the road to read the sign. I mean, I think you have Discovery Park there and you lead them into that building when they're on the phone to tell them that that's where you are. And I don't think, again, that it should be something passed to get a rider to all the labels of everyone who's in the building. I think Discovery Park is the name of the plaza and that's efficient. So, thank you.
Oh, sir, can I get your name again?
Linda Young.
Okay, thanks.
I just came here tonight to see what's going on, but this agenda says that this is a public hearing for the amendment to the final development for Discovery Park. I don't think this is a final development. The applicant was suggesting that people can't find a place. If you look up on McAslin, that's the only building on McAslin all the way to, I don't know where. You know, I mean, it's not moving up there if they can't find it. I think there's something wrong. So I'm not for a sign out the front street. He's talking about a sign, about a sidewalk there that's going to be real big because he suggests the size is a bit bigger than Discovery Park on the wall. And those numbers like that right now are that big. If you go up to bigger numbers, the applicant is going to sign out front, you're going to have numbers that names that big. So I suggest maybe better putting a sign out, but he put an address, a nice address, say one, two, three, four, five, and a round circle on his lawn there, painting on both sides where people can see the address. If you can't see the building coming down the hill, you can see the address. But that's the only building on the side of the street that they can't find it. They should be going to a doctor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you have an opportunity to rebut or make a final statement to the commission? Okay.
We've seen the questions for staff after the hearing.
You can ask questions of staff now if you like.
I guess it sounds like things have been checked out as far as sizing of the sign, although it does seem really large for the, at least for the location, I guess setback wise. I was trying to remember what relationships we have between scales of signs and especially height versus setback. I mean, this is at about a 45-degree angle, I think it's like 12 feet back and 11 feet high.
It's, I'll have Fred get up and discuss the specifics, but the way the code is, it's based on linear square footage of the property.
Frontage footage?
Road frontage, yeah.
Okay. That translates into a, into the scaling on this.
Right, yeah. But as the applicant did mention, we've confirmed it does meet the requirements of the land use code.
Did Alex get a chance to look at obstruction concerns coming down that hill, somebody coming out of that park?
Yeah, his, his concern on something like this is that it's not within the site triangle. So we.
That's our fixed location.
And it's not in the site triangle? It is not.
May I ask a question on these solar panels? Is there any covenant that would preclude the usage of these solar panels as an arch panel?
No, actually, there's just, last year recently, the state passed new laws where municipalities have very little control over the installation of renewable systems like this, especially residential, but also on commercial. Okay.
I just have a question. Did the applicant request, were there discussions originally when the final development plan was first approved regarding signage of this size or is this the first request?
Well, we have the, signage was addressed in the original plan, well, when it was approved and as I mentioned before, it was a monument sign and then a building sign for each building as they come through. And the location of these signs was approved as part of their final development plan for this building. So this is a new request that we received.
And I think more of my questions around history is, do you, I guess it would depend on you guys, is whether or not a sign of this size was discussed originally and turned down for any reason? Just trying to get some history.
Not that, I don't, I don't remember. I don't recall there being a monument sign like this because there was already the signage on, you know, on the walls that are, like a monument sign already that identified the Office Park. Okay. So, okay, any other questions of staff at this time? Fred, did you, was there something you wanted?
On the timing, do you happen to recall or? On the timing, do you happen to recall or have access to the precedent examples for time limits? I don't know whether we have a shut-off, a maximum duration or a shut-off.
Um, there, just from memory, most recent ones have been no later than 10:00 PM, and I think there's another one that was no later than midnight.
Okay, yeah.
Eleven stood out on my mind for some reason, whether it was Eden Allen or something we had talked about.
There's a provision in the code, section 16340, that basically says that any limited sign within 150 feet of residential zone district shall not be limited between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
And this is, yeah, it's greater than 150 feet, but it gives us a guideline.
Sounds like it's within the range of what they were planning.
Panels are pretty limited.
What's that?
They're still pretty limited, solar panels.
How much?
Two, three hours.
Just to touch base on what Ms. Young said, that the signage itself is called out in the drawings as three-and-a-half-inch letters on the sign bands, so not bigger than what's already on the Discovery Park sign already, so the six sign bands would be like only three-and-a-half-inch tall letters. And I guess that begs the question, is that, is that really big enough for what you, for what you're after? So, okay. Anything else? Okay. I guess at that, I will close the public hearing and open this up for discussion. Start with the actual thing.
I saw that look on your face.
You love starting with the...
He answered the question I had, which was how many more signs we want to put for Discovery Park, and I think I've heard satisfactorily that this is it, for the most part, on this one building. Doesn't sound like it's coming up in the near future with other buildings, so we don't have to look at other alternative entrances or anything like that. Looks like it's in keeping with the design, which you see some of those same architectural features in the building itself.
Okay.
My thoughts around it are that, you know, as a, as a business that wants to be viable, as a building that wants to be viable and identifiable, you know, signage is important, and so I don't disagree with the idea of having signage. The effectiveness relative to, you know, being on a fairly large boulevard-type street, that's always a challenge, right? I mean, it's, it's just a challenge, period, when you're, when you're already five to six lanes wide and with, with speed, but it is, in my view, a property owner's right to be able to try to affect the most positive signage you can, and it meets our design criteria.
I don't really have much comment, except I don't see anything wrong with the size or the location that we're looking at. You know, we get to address other buildings and other signage down the road. I wouldn't like to see one of these every 150 feet down the hill, but we can address those when it comes up. You know, my only thing, as I said, is I'm kind of an address guy, and give me an address to a property that's up there, so I don't have to try and read each individual business letter, and then I know, okay, well, there's basically my address, and I'll turn here, and then I'll find the building. A lot of buildings over an interlock, and you go to the front of them, all they have is an address, you have to go into that address and then look on the board to see where the business is that you're going to. So, I think it's, to me, it's lacking because it doesn't have a property address, just numbers up there. Wouldn't even have to be the whole street, because you know kind of your McCaslin or Discovery Park. Other than that, I think it's necessary for businesses to survive, to have the people find them in a timely manner, so.
Yeah, I think I'm in about the same boat. I guess I'm not too concerned about the rationale for the need of it, and I suspect if the address of someone that seemed to believe would be more effective than the sign names as far as actually finding it, and that's one thing, I can kind of, I can also imagine that the advertising and just getting the, getting names out side of things is probably at least an equal draw-off for the tenants, so either way, it's, it's something the property owners have a right to do. I don't think I have any other concerns.
Okay. I guess my, my biggest thing is that, I think that I wouldn't like to see us come back to the, to the well again for additional signs for the office park. If you're asking for a monument sign now, you may get an office, a monument sign now, but you may not get any others, and so, and that may be a condition of the approval that we consider tonight. At least I'll throw that out there as a condition of approval. And I would, I guess I would reiterate what Commissioner Prestesider said, which is that the, I think that there's, there may be more value to you with listing or having the ability to put the addresses of the different buildings, even the future buildings, on the sign as opposed to individual business names, because I think that will be, that'll be more beneficial to you, given if this is, this is what you, you know, this is what you got. And so, you know, I think so many people these days, you find their directions using MapQuest or Google or whatever, that they find the directions to get there, but once you actually get to the location, you're looking for the street number, and that may be, that may be actually more beneficial to you. So, I mean, you could put on the sign what you want, this is what you're rendering, which is fine, but just my, my two cents, I guess, on that. So, that's, I guess, and then I'm definitely in favor of putting some type of time limit on the, on the lighting, so.
I'm generally okay with the idea of monument sign. I think businesses need all the visibility that they can get, and especially in these economic times. I've been involved with some monument signs myself and other properties, and I think they're generally effective in getting visibility increased to businesses, so that's, I'm in favor of that. I still have some concerns about the design of it. I think that you could get the same-sized panels and the same-sized lettering without the stone columns on the side, it might just be a little bit less visible, bulky, I guess, is the, is my thought. You could, again, you'd still have the same-sized sign, which is, that's what you're trying to communicate, but you wouldn't have the stone size, but that's a design question. I don't know that I would oppose it just because of that. The resident case, Ken?
I'm generally okay with the sign. I do, I do agree with the public comments, I do wouldn't want to see signs every 100 feet going up McCaslin. I think, though, I am in favor of additional signage for some of these businesses. I think that, one, our economy, and two, I understand how important visibility is, and we have some tenants in the, the old Chicago's conflicts that are struggling because they can't get appropriate signage, and I, and I think putting a message out there that, you know, if, if that's all we need, is signage to drive people into these businesses, if they believe that'll help, but that is certainly of value. So keeping this sign soft and putting some timing on it so it's not on too late, I think is appropriate. The way the lights are positioned, that's what, I think it's similar in design to what we have in the marketplace on some of the monument signs. When I first saw them going in, I was really concerned, but then when they were lit, they really, I mean, those lights are very well-directed, and it's, that light doesn't seem to escape. So if we could put some time restrictions on it, considering that's probably a 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM type, you know, businesses there that, you know, having those lights go beyond 6:00 or 7:00, 7:30, probably.
Further discussion? Let's see. Let's see, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Did you want to, I guess as far as placing a constraint as we, as a condition on this for future street side signage, I'm not sure whether there's a need to do that or a recommended way to do that, given the way the FDP is already written?
Yeah, I think we're covered under the plan development that's proved in the way it reads. They have to come forward with a final development plan for any future buildings, or come back to amend this final development plan again if they want to do any future signs, so I think.
And if you wanted to get even more specific than that, or just leave it at?
You could put in another condition, there's no additional street-side signage, but that could always be amended again by another requirement.
More of a reminder for the?
Yeah, but it would be in the, in the resolution if you want it to be there.
But you said it was limited by the street, by the linear frontage, right? And so what is that allowed? I guess it doesn't, it's not?
Allowed, because it's, yeah.
I'll put Fox Consulting, Companer, just to clarify. There are other, the other lot, there's another lot that has a frontage on McCaslin, but there's another, there's a third lot that does not, okay? So that's how we pick the size for this one in terms of its maximum, is based on their frontage, which for Lot 1 is, is fair distance. So when they come back with an FDP for one, a building on of the other lots, you'll start with what's in the PD already, which is, they have some other signs that they can have on their lots, and then go from there. I mean, if they request then, well, Lot 2, we want to have a sign on McCaslin, well, then you'll have to discuss that, like, like Matt said. It'd be extra for something over and above what is already basically outlined in the PD.
On the PD, though, is it all, I guess, are the signs that were, that are already allowed, constrained to be away from the street?
Yes, the signs that are allowed, other than the monument sign, and I'm not even sure that touches the right of way, it may encroach a little bit, that the stone monument sign. Those other signs that are outlined in the PD are on each lot. In other words, they're along the drive or maybe at one of the entryways.
Specifically building identification.
There are identification signs, there's a building identification sign, that was one-sized, one-kind, and now a tenant list sign is also allowed on, on a lot, okay?
Which is what this is?
On a lot. This is different, because it's on McCaslin, it's on the lot, but it is for Building 1 on Lot 1, so it's not for another building or anything like that.
Thanks, Fred.
My concern would be down the road with these tenants being on this one monument sign, and they add more buildings, how are they going to accommodate that common drive from the other building? Are they coming back and redoing?
This is the slippery slope, that, you know.
Or like Jason said, it becomes an address list, you're going to put in just building addresses, or the biggest dog gets his name on the sign, and the other guy gets his name on the monument in front of the building.
I mean, is there a possibility of additional buildings on Lot 1, or just on the overall development?
No, just on the overall development. There's four, there's four lots.
Four lots, right.
And so they, I mean, they would have?
They feed off that drive.
Right, but they'd have the ability in the final plot for additional lots, or is that already?
Do they have approval to build additional buildings at this point?
They do, okay.
And so signage, has signage been?
They have approval to be, they have to file an FDP for any additional buildings they want to build on any of the lots that are left, okay? And there's an FDP will be needed for each building on each of the lots that are left.
And they're going to have?
They only have an FDP for the building they have.
But they have an opportunity at that point, regardless of what we say, to request whatever monument signs they so choose. I mean, I mean, that's in our code currently, I mean, they have that right, yeah. And I mean, I'm, I think I'm generally opposed to putting something in to prevent somebody from doing something, because this board happens to think it's appropriate.
Like I said, if you must, there's the reminder.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I was getting at earlier.
Any commission could theoretically, it could apply and it could be approved.
Right.
Even no matter what we said tonight.
Yeah, and I'm, yeah, I mean, I, I guess putting it in for historical purposes, I mean, I often wish we had a way to access historical information or a historian, and that's been brought up before, so that we could get answers to questions like, you know, was this addressed originally by the original board? If that's the only way to do it, I wouldn't, I'd be fine with it, I think.
I still stand by my statement that I'm willing to entertain a motion.
All right, I'll take a shot. Move to approve Resolution Number PC 1, Series 2009, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior, recommending approval for the amendment to the final development plan for the Discovery Office Park, and Case Number FDP A-2008-2, to add a free-scanning entrance sign adjacent to McCaslin Boulevard with the following conditions. Matt, I don't remember the verbiage usually used for red marks, but?
Yeah. Any red marks or minor technical corrections?
Okay. Another condition would be to satisfy a lights-off timing constraint of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Second by, motion by Hinkle, second by Prestesider. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to see the time more restricted than that. I don't see a reason to have that signage lit until 10:00 PM.
I would agree with that.
You know, during, like, during, let's say, summer hours, when there's a lot of solar gain.
Just looking at the specs on the light, it looks like you have settings of two hours after they come on or four hours after they come on. I don't, do you have the ability to set a specific time, or are you going to be out there judging?
Sunset.
Daylight hours.
Sunset to?
If you, just for the record. If you're going to respond, you need to have, you come to the?
All right, this is Dan Hunter again, and there's no reason for those lights to be on past like 8:00. The businesses really aren't open there, so it can, you know, at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night, it can just go off. And of course, a timer has to be adjusted depending on daylight savings versus regular.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it gives you a two-hour window, or a four-hour window, or a six-hour window, so.
Yeah, and you can adjust, depends on a timer, to, you know, turn it on and be on for two hours, and it's done.
Right.
If eight seems reasonable, great.
Yeah, I haven't seen a reason for it.
Thanks.
It's just not there. And I might just address some more things. At some point in time in which there are further buildings, these could be addresses for new buildings, and then leave it up to the individual signs interior to the park to tell people, go here. And there could be an address for the park, for the first building, as the very top item on this, so, I mean, we can, we can do all that, and those comments, I think, make a lot of sense also. You know, an address is what people are looking for, and then that combined with, oh, here's my business, here's where I'm trying to get to, that helps.
Okay.
So we can do all of that, you know, I don't know that you need to make that part of your motion.
I'll try not to get that.
But 7:00, 8:00 as a cutoff time, that is, is very.
Did we say 8:00?
Yeah, let's say.
He's been amending his motion to be 8:00, right?
Yeah, 8:00 PM to 7:00.
The second? Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Fill in James.
Thank you.
Putting the James hat on.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes Item 5, which is the public hearing, and we'll move on to Item 6, Staff Announcements.
Let's see, my one that I wanted to bring up was, the board had some, John was at the last board meeting, the board had some discussion with regard to commissioners and committees and their roles and possible work plans for 2009, and something that came out of there, that discussion was the board's desire to have?
that discussion was the board's desire to have all the advisory committees and commissions provide to them a proposed 2009 work plan. And we had some discussion about this when we talked about the role.
You gave them, you provided the list that we suggested.
Right.
And the comments came back were more general, right?
Yeah, very.
That they would like us to pursue, put together that work plan.
Yeah.
We didn't get a lot of feedback on our specific things. We listed other than, I think the economic development suggestion went over, like, a lead the land. But they certainly, I think we're going to see the lead standard, the green building standards come before us and things like that. So there are some things that they, we know they want us to do, I think, but it would be nice to have some feedback.
Yeah, so.
From them, based on that list, and/or any suggestions of things else they'd like to add, that they force, you know, envision us taking on this year.
So what I propose is come up with a draft, taking off of what we already discussed earlier, adding some items that I think the Planning Commission might be interested in for 2009 and working on, and sending that out via email, and kind of working at it offline, see if we can come to some consensus, and then I can forward that on to Scott, and he can forward it on to the board for their feedback. And then what I expect to happen from there is the board will get, receive all these work plans, they'll provide their comment, and then there'll be maybe a little bit of back-and-forth until we get our final product in place. The other thing they talked about doing was assigning a liaison from the board to each advisory committee or commission. So they're going through the process now, identifying who that might be for each committee. Open space is pretty set, as long as, because they have two trustees on their advisory committee, and then Recycling Conservation Advisory Committee has at least one.
Can we, can we request, Commissioner?
Well, I can, I can tell you who they're, I think, talking about Joe Sorelli.
Right, and I guess I would say, I already got a friend in Joe.
I'd like to see, you know.
Somebody else, but, I mean, I, Joe would be fine, too. I'm not saying anything in particular, I just, you know, somebody else who hasn't, has any of these other trustees that haven't necessarily had exposures of the Planning Commission, I think would be beneficial, in my opinion, but.
I'll let you know as soon as I.
And if we get stuck with Joe, we get stuck with Joe.
Sorry, Joe.
We love Joe.
So I'll send that list out here by the end of the week for everybody to take a look at and give me feedback on. I think that was it for me.
Would you expect then we would meet and have that as an agenda item then?
Yeah.
Since it's been out?
Yeah. It'll, possibly that first meeting in February is what I was thinking.
For the work plan?
Yeah. We're getting close on Chapter 16. I'll just mention Jeff's finished that out, him and Kendry Carberry, and so staff's going through it. We hope to have a meeting of the minds by the end of this month, and hopefully get something out to the Planning Commission to look at in February, which will be a multiple-meeting type of project, I would imagine.
For the benefit of the commission, could you just update them on what happened with the 76th Street properties at the board meeting?
So Guardian Storage, as I think everybody's aware, was voted down at the meeting in December by the board. The way that process works, it can be reconsidered by the town board at the next meeting by a member who voted no on the project. They can make a motion to reconsider it. One of the concerns of that project was the lack of sales tax generation with it. Town manager, in the month of December, worked with the applicant to come up with a fee in lieu of sales tax to the tune of, I think it was $202,000.
It's actually more than impact fee.
Yeah, an impact fee. A one-month sum, or something to be paid over a 10-year period. The applicant agreed to that, and it went back to the, and so the board has made the decision to reconsider this project at the February 23 meeting. There'll be a public hearing, go through the whole public notification process with residents, as we did with the prior meeting, and it'll be considered on the 23rd for the annexation.
So if you have an interest in the project, then that would be your best opportunity to come forth and state your opinion at this point. The town attorney, I think, has recommended no further work sessions or anything related to that or the adjacent properties until the public hearing is concluded, so.
Have you been involved in that by maybe Kendra's recommendation?
Yeah, just simply because it's difficult to talk about that area without talking about this five-acre piece of property, so.
Just curiosity of process, can that continue on? I mean, so if it gets voted down again, does that allowance then be permitted at the next meeting, the same thing may happen? I'm just curious.
That's pretty unusual for the town to have done this, but there's no statutory requirement that bars, you know, the reconsideration of it or a new application.
And it's not limited, they could continue to reconsider.
I wouldn't expect it to happen, but.
Legally, it's.
Yeah, we would probably do it. I'd have to reconsider if my robbing rules in order on that one, but.
Okay, anything else?
So they don't largely have any problem with the project, the usage part, it's generational.
There was concern about the revenue generation from the project, and there was some discussion and concern by some of the members about the location that was, the planning commission is, you know, discussed about, you know, being kind of in the middle of those five properties. So there was some concern, but that'll definitely get discussed again on the 23rd, I'm sure, so. But one of my things that I'll propose to the Planning Commission is visioning not only for the 76th Street properties, but any other properties that the Planning Commission feels that it wants to go through the process of doing, so.
Oh, and just one other thing, actually, there was discussion, too, about the Richmond property?
Yes, the board at the last meeting approved agreements between Richmond American Homes and the school district for the 11-acre piece of property next to Eldorado K8, vacant piece of property to the north. What this agreement would, the school district still has to consider and vote on the agreement, but if that's approved, what this would do is allow Richmond Homes to basically swap with the town. Their 15 acres at the corner of Colton and McCaslin, with this 11 acres. Richmond Homes would then go through a final plat site plan for the 11 acres to build additional single-family homes, approximately, I think it's 38. And the town would get free and clear the property at Colton and McCaslin, the 15 acres to use as we deem best. Richmond Homes, I will mention, is planning on having a concept plan with the town board on February 9 for that 11-acre piece of property.
Did that pass the school board?
They, on the 26th of January, they will consider that, so. All indications that they will, but we'll know better on the 26th, so.
So does this maintain like-for-like in terms of if something was kind of being looked at as, or designated for, let's say, commercial or business versus residential? I mean, is it a like?
Are 15 acres?
Is it a like-for-like?
It's zoned commercial.
Right.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
It's zoned commercial.
Okay.
Within the Rock Creek Ranch BUDs.
And Richmond is shy, they said the shed shop, the land around it hasn't really found any takers for it, so.
Okay.
Is the zoning relevant?
The housing market.
Yeah, right, that is booming.
Is the zoning of any relevance when the town owns it? I mean, do we, as a town owning that parcel have? It would have to be municipal.
No, it doesn't have to be municipal use. I mean, the town, it could use it as municipal use, could sell it as commercial, so. The problem, Richmond has always wanted to build residential there, and over the years we've told them no on several occasions, and so this allows them to build additional residential, and they tell us they'll build those right away, they won't wait, so.
So we're not laying out money for this? It's just a?
There is a slight cost to the town as far as extending some of the utilities, but not to exceed, I think.
There's a payment, though, to the, to the school district.
We're forgiving some of the debt.
Forgiving debt.
That we owe the school district for some, we had an agreement with them, we built some improvements, and they were going to pay us back over a five-year period, I believe. So we're forgiving some of that debt, and then we have some costs to extend some of the utilities, but we estimate those costs in total will be no more than $60,000, so.
Okay.
Pretty good, too?
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, meetings adjourned. One hour.